I'd like to call the Monday, July 15, 2024 Oakwood City Council Meeting to order. Would you please rise and join me with the pledge to the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please, Lori?
Mayor Duncan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Mrs. Turbin?
Here.
Mrs. Jackson?
Here.
And may I have a report on the minutes of our June 3 regular session, work session, and executive session, and our June 17 work session and executive session, Councilmember Jackson?
I have read the minutes for the regular work and executive sessions that you stated, and upon review, I found them to be complete and correct, and I move that we accept the minutes as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So ordered. We have one status report item this evening. We had a vacancy on our property maintenance committee from Precinct G. We have three members, I believe, yes, three members from each precinct, and council has decided to appoint Dan Gentry to that committee, and Dan has agreed to serve, and so I would make a motion that we appoint Dan Gentry to our property maintenance committee. Have a second?
Second.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And now, for the reason you're all here, it's time for our May and June beautification award winners. I think we're going to show a video first, and then I will come down in front of the podium and we'll announce the people, and if you're here in the audience, we have an award for you. So let's look forward to all the beautiful properties in Oakwood. I will now come down, and we'll call out everyone's name and address, and if you're here, we'll have a picture of your property and your award. And if you're not here, we will make sure that we get those to the award winners. Our beautification committee, I think, was the group that made the recommendations to the city and made those choices, so want to thank them for their volunteer efforts. So our first award winner is Althea Harper and Stuart Adam, 347 Skank Avenue. Are they here? No, okay. Next is Carleen Matern, 40 West Shotts, 0 for 2. Jeff and Susan Perks, 626 Garden Road. All right, must be something going on on TV tonight, huh? Okay. Yeah. Ashley and John Coyne, 810 East Shotts. Wow, did I do that? Okay. Marsh and Dick Stevens, 40 Wiltshire Boulevard. All right. Brenda and Christian Hess, 25 Aberdeen Avenue. Jeffrey and Kimber Calderon, 147 Hadley Avenue. Carol Fleck, 416 East Peach Orchard Avenue. We're on a roll here, aren't we? Okay. Let's see. Laura and Robert Peterson, 2626 Delane Avenue. Vladimir Benin, 406 Clariana. Caitlin and Joseph Dear, 310 Delwood Avenue. Chris and Terry Jones, 145 Peach Orchard Road.
So we did mail invitations, right? We did. These people, they're here? Okay, just checking.
All right. Maybe it's the presenter, I don't know.
Well, we were thinking it.
Yes. Jaclyn and Joshua Gall, 1180 Harmon Avenue. Sarah and Benjamin Martin, 9 Wisteria Drive. Brad and Maria Getcoets, 1201 Running Need Road. And now, this is the end of the May winners. The Little Exchange, 45 Park Avenue.
Oh.
And we have a winner!
Hey!
I forgot, you know, each of you have to give a five-minute speech on camera. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Okay, congratulations. All right.
We need a photo.
Oh, sure. And when does the holiday season start at the Little Exchange?
Oh my gosh. We will be closing the shop in November 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. We will have our holiday open house, and it will be a holiday extravaganza, so make sure you all check it out. We'll have everything on social media. It'll be right after Halloween, because everything's early this year. So we just have to get out of the Halloween spirit Thursday night and into Christmas on Friday.
And a lot of your donations go to Children's Medical Center, correct?
Children's Hospital.
Perfect. Thank you. We have Carissa Rand, 621 Orlando Terrace. Hey, we got a winner.
We got time. All of May didn't show up, so.
All right. We have Jane Manny, 300 Southview Road. We'll make sure we get that to her. Marilyn and Gary Mitchner, 108 Patterson Road. They're here. Welcome. We have Patty and Paul Vanderberg, 320 Acorn Drive. I don't believe they are here. All right. Janet and Gregory Schnitker, 404 Wiltshire. All right. And then we have Connie Philbrand, 233 Aberdeen Avenue. Beth and Jeremy Wilson, 324 East Peach Orchard Avenue. Karen Ciumbroni, 338 Wonderly Avenue. Doug Kinsey, 315 Triangle Avenue. I do not see Doug. India and John Clark, 112 Beverly Place, and they are here. We have Maria and Ray J. John, 203 Greenmont Boulevard. And we have Taylor and Mike Russell, 420 Kramer Road, and they are here. Congratulations. We have Lorna Waters Talez, 1660 Ridgway Road. And we have Nicholas Fischio, 3034 Wisteria Drive. And we have Dr. Thomas Olson and Mary Busalis, 524 Walnut Springs Drive. And our last winner is here. I don't know if I'm going to give her any speaking parts, but I will. It's Wright Library, 1776 Far Hills. So what would you like to say to our community about Wright Library?
Well, what I'd like to say is I really want to thank our garden volunteers for our native plant gardens. They have made our grounds absolutely stunningly beautiful. It's run all by volunteers, and that's why we got this award. So kudos to Mara and the rest of the Green Oakwood team.
Okay. And I noticed in the video, we got to go right by the picnic, or the bench, named in honor of our former city manager, Mike Kelly. So that was the highlight. No, it was really the plants. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Oh, we got another picture. It is a quarterly newsletter, correct? It's a quarterly newsletter? So she took four pictures. Okay. Thank you all for that. So this is our visitor's portion of our meeting. If anybody is here that wishes to address council on any other matter, this would be the time that you could come up to the podium and state your name and address for our records and for the people at home, and we would welcome any comments you have to city council. The ones I didn't give the mic to, you know. Hearing done? Okay. You're all welcome to, you're all welcome to stay. It's going to get really exciting here later. All right. Again, thank you all for all your efforts making Oakwood a beautiful place to live. Appreciate it very much. All right. Well, that then concludes our visitor's section. We will now go to our legislation, and I think Councilmember Stevens is up first with a resolution.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Duncan. Resolution to authorize and direct the Director of Finance to certify certain delinquent charges for cutting noxious weeds and nuisance plant material to the county auditor for collection. Each year, the city incurs costs for mowing and clearing overgrown yards and removing nuisance plant material when owners do not take care of their property. The city bills property owners for those costs, and most of them do pay. For those who do not pay, this is our annual resolution to certify the costs to the county auditor so they can be added to the tax bill for each property. This certification includes six properties at a total outstanding dollar amount of $1,679.34. I move that council adopt this resolution.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments for Councilmember Stevens? Hearing none. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Byington also has a resolution.
Yes, Your Honor, this is a resolution amending Resolution Number 1870, so as to consent to a county-wide expansion of the Dayton Regional Energy Special Improvement District, or the ESID. In 2020, the city of Oakwood became a participating member of the Dayton Regional Energy Special Improvement District, or the ESID. This allowed Oakwood property owners to obtain property-assessed Clean Energy, or PACE, financing for qualified energy-efficient property improvements. PACE funding comes in the form of a private loan that is paid via special assessment against the property. Oakwood is a pass-through entity in this arrangement, receiving the assessment and forwarding them on to the lender. Dayton ESID currently serves a district that is defined to include the city of Dayton and any area within Montgomery County that chooses to participate and that are geographically contiguous to Dayton. However, the ESID Board wants to expand the district by defining it to include any jurisdiction within Montgomery County that choose to participate regardless of whether they are geographically contiguous with Dayton. The only geographical requirement would be that they are within Montgomery County. To implement this change, Oakwood must update its ESID legislation to define the new countywide district, and that is the purpose of this resolution. So I make a motion that council adopt this resolution this evening.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions for Vice Mayor Byington? Hearing none. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens also has an ordinance.
An ordinance to itemize and levy special assessments for the construction or reconstruction of sidewalks and appurtenances thereto in the city of Oakwood, Ohio. I am introducing two ordinances together. They have the same title and are identical, except that they relate to the same project in two different project years, 2022 and 2023. These ordinances are the fourth and final legislative step of our 2022 and 2023 sidewalk curb and driveway apron projects. Each ordinance itemizes sidewalk repair costs that were not already paid directly by the affected homeowners and authorizes these costs to be assessed by the Montgomery County Auditor. The ordinance for the 2022 project includes total assessments of $20,280.63. The ordinance for the 2023 project includes total assessments of $13,493.91. I move that council waive the second reading and adopt these ordinances tonight, together, by a single vote.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions for Councilmember Stevens? Hearing none. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
And I believe, so we did those two together, so now Vice Mayor Byington also has an ordinance?
Yes, Your Honor, this is an ordinance amending provisions of the Oakwood zoning ordinance to include a definition of temporary outdoor restroom facilities and to amend the accessory structure regulations to expressly address the placement thereof. This is the first reading of an ordinance to amend our zoning code. It would create a definition and provide specific regulations for the placement and use of temporary outdoor restroom facilities, commonly known as porta-potties. They are already permitted under the general accessory structure regulations of the zoning code, but there are no specific definitions or regulations to treat them differently than any other type of accessory structure. City staff is recommending provisions that will define temporary outdoor restroom facilities and establish clear rules as to permitted locations, durations, maintenance, and public visibility. Planning Commission reviewed these proposed changes at a public hearing on June 5 and has recommended that they be approved by council. Council will conduct its own public hearing tonight and then bring the ordinance back for its second reading at our August 5 meeting. So this is a first reading of the ordinance, so I'm not going to make a motion at this time, but I would encourage you to conduct the public hearing.
Thank you. Before we begin, we'll go over the format for the people that aren't here. We have no one here that wants to testify before our public hearing, but we would like to get, for council's benefit, because anything that the Planning Commission, because they adopted this, it has to have an open hearing for people to comment. We will also give them a second chance to comment at our next meeting, but I'd like to have our law director, Rob Jacks, give staff, give his report.
Thank you, Mayor Duncan. Members of council, as was indicated in the introduction there that Vice Mayor Byington read, this was presented to the Planning Commission on June 5. This is an amendment to the text of the zoning code. And anytime we do a zoning code text amendment, the decision standard that you have to abide by is that you're finding that the proposed amendment is consistent with the purposes of the zoning code, the city's comprehensive plan, and the interest of the city of Oakwood as a whole. Fairly general standard, but that's what is guiding your decision. The background on this is that we've seen a lot of The background on this is that we've seen a lot of porta-potties more recently here in Oakwood. They're starting to crop up with a lot of residential construction projects. And we wanted to have some guidance in the code as to where they can be placed, how long they can be placed there, that sort of thing. As indicated, they're already permitted generally as a detached accessory structure, but the only guidance for accessory structures, unless there's something specific written in the code for it, is that they can't be taller than 12 feet high, and they have to be related to the primary use of the property, which typically is going to be a single-family residence. So under current code, you can have a porta-potty pretty much anywhere in your yard you want. And I guess you could put it there for about as long as you want, as long as you get a zoning permit for it. What this does, this proposed amendment is a few things. First of all, it adds a definition to the code for porta-potty, and I'll read it to you, although it's legally, as every good definition should be. Temporary outdoor restroom facilities means a portable structure that is manufactured, designed, marketed, and proportioned for fully enclosed, temporary, outdoor bathroom use by one person at a time. Such structures are typically mounted on runners or skids or placed directly on the land without footers and used on construction sites or for temporary outdoor events. That's the definition that we would add into the code for what we mean when we talk about a temporary outdoor restroom facility. We're trying to avoid the phrase porta-potty in our code. Would also add something to Section 402.1 that clearly states that these are permitted accessory structures, but that they are subject to what we call design and performance standards. We have a whole section in the 900s in our zoning code that spell out design and performance standards for a variety of things. If you want to have a circular driveway, these are the standards that would apply to that. If you want to have entrance pillars, these would apply. This would add in some design and performance standards for temporary outdoor restroom facilities. It would also limit these facilities to being placed in the side or the rear yard of your property. There is a provision that allows the building commissioner to waive that if he's satisfied that it's appropriately screened or out of sight, something like that. It could be, I guess, purely in the front yard. It could be in an interior side yard or a corner side yard. But the general rule is that it would only be in an interior side yard or a rear yard. As far as timing and number, these are only permitted in connection with ongoing permitted construction on the same zoning lot. So you can only have it while there's some sort of construction project going on. They can be installed no more than three days in advance, and they would have to be removed within three days after your project is concluded. For smaller residential properties, and we're defining that to be one-to-three-family residential properties, you can only have one. If you have a four-family or something larger, you could apply for more than one. Commensurate with the size of the project, I guess. And then those limitations do not apply. We carved out a couple of exceptions. One is for public governmental athletic facilities. And part of the reason for that is you'll notice that the schools typically have them out there by the practice field. They'll have a couple of them out there during the sports season. They're out there for a long period of time. They're not in connection with ongoing construction, but those are just sort of a temporary restroom facility that they then take away out of season. It would also not apply to any facilities that are approved as part of a special use, a planned development, or a temporary use. So a good example of a temporary use might be, a few months back, we had a special event over Hawthorne Hill. There was a big economic development announcement that went on there, and they actually had trailers of the larger-type outdoor restrooms. Those were approved as part of that temporary event permit, and that would be exempt from the operation of these definitions. We put in maintenance requirements that if you have a porta-potty or a temporary outdoor restroom facility, it has to be regularly serviced to ensure that it's not a nuisance in your neighborhood. The building commissioner can request service records if needed to verify that you're in compliance. There's a removal provision that if construction stops for more than seven continuous days, you have to have it removed off your property. That can be waived if it's appropriately screened or not visible, but generally speaking, if you're going to have a pause in construction lasting more than a week, you'd have to get it removed and bring it back later when construction recommences. As I mentioned, there's a waiver provision that allows the building commissioner to allow it in a corner side or a front yard if he can be satisfied that it's appropriately screened, but the general rule is that it would be in the rear or the interior side yard. If there are violations of any of this, not only the permit can be revoked, but it can also be used as a basis to deny future permits regarding the same project. So if you're having it out there when you're not supposed to, or it's not appropriately screened, or you're not having it serviced, et cetera, you can lose your right to have one there. And then last, there's a waiver provision that allows the Planning Commission to approve deviations or variances from this as part of the major site development review process, which we would do anytime there's larger-scale development or redevelopment of a site going on. The Planning Commission would have some authority to approve the placement of portable outdoor restroom facilities as part of that project, if need be. It's fairly straightforward. Like I said, we just don't have guidelines right now, so this would put some in place. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have one pertaining to the seven-day no-work, taking the porta-john away. Will they need to reapply for a new permit to bring it back?
I think we'd probably apply a sort of a common sense rule. If it's the same project and the same zoning permit for the underlying project, I would think they could just have it brought back when they restart construction. If they wanted to bring it back for a different project under a different zoning permit, then we would require them to get another permit.
Same project, just got taken away. Is there a cost to this permit?
What's the standard zoning permit? Is it 40 bucks right now? Might be. It's 40 or 50 dollars, whatever the standard zoning.
One-time fee, minimal. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for our law director? All right. I'm going to try to memorize that definition of portable outdoor restroom facility before our next meeting.
Perfect. I'll let you recite it.
It sounds like a lawyer wrote it, though. I'm impressed. Okay. All right. So we'll now open up the public hearing, and is there anyone here that wishes to speak against the text amendment so ably written by our law director? And I see none. And if anyone wishes to speak for the provision, I would ask them to speak at this time. And I see none on either side, so I'll close the public hearing. And we would normally deliberate at this time, but I don't believe we're going to deliberate because we're going to decide this next month. And I hope at least one person cares about this at our next meeting.
Do we?
I think we'd be more than happy to hear your opine. Okay. All right. Thank you. That does conclude our public hearing. And then finally, Vice Mayor Byington has a resolution.
Yes, Your Honor. This last resolution is confirming the city of Oakwood's acceptance of and participation in a proposed settlement agreement in connection with ongoing national opioid litigation and authorizing future participation in similar agreements using the dispersment mechanism set forth in the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding. Ohio is included in ongoing litigation involving the national prescription opioid epidemic. This is complex, multi-district litigation occurring nationwide, and there are many defendants, including opioid distributors, manufacturers, and pharmacies. In 2021, Oakwood signed a document known as the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding, or MOU. In doing so, we joined with political subdivisions throughout the state to agree on a mechanism for distributing any opioid settlement that may be reached. The One Ohio framework has already been used to distribute several opioid settlements to Oakwood and other local governments. These include state-level settlements reached in 2021 with several opioid distributors and in late 2022 with several pharmacies and opioid manufacturers. The resolution I'm introducing tonight will authorize Oakwood to accept a new settlement with Kroger, which will likely be distributed via the terms of the One Ohio MOU. Tonight's resolution will authorize the city manager to accept any future opioid settlements, provided that they are structured to allow distribution according to the terms of the One Ohio MOU. That is already in place and allowing efficient distribution. As with each of these settlements, any money received by the city is restricted for the use in abating the opioid epidemic. This resolution will constitute a legislative approval of the Kroger settlement, as required by the court, as well as any future opioid settlements. And I move that council adopt this resolution tonight.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any questions for Vice Mayor Byington? Hearing done. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes our legislation this evening. We now have a very informative report that our Public Safety Department, from Chief Allen Hill. We welcome you and look forward to hearing your report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This is my second report for the year, and I'm going to just cover some of the capital improvement projects that we have going on. I just want to remind residents of the speed signs that we have, a few personnel changes, our continued dispatch compliance standards that we have to meet, our use of force stats, the Good Choice tickets, the Citizens Police Academy that's up and coming this fall. I want to talk a little bit about our animal complaints, and I've invited some members of the Animal Resource Center to talk a little bit about what they do as well within the county. So those are going to be my main topics that I will cover this evening. As far as capital improvements for 2024, in the spring of this year, we received a $40,000 Bureau Workers' Comp grant to go towards the purchase of a power-load cot system for Medic 27. The primary purpose of this device is really twofold. One, to prevent injuries to EMS providers for the repetition of loading patients in and out of the medic, and it's also to reduce injuries to patients because it's no longer manual, it's mechanical now. So now it's a very nice, smooth lowering and raising. And you know, these cots, you know, sometimes you have a patient that may weigh up 100 pounds, but sometimes you have patients that could weigh 500 pounds as well. So when you're lifting up, all the jerking and everything is removed. You know, EMS providers, one out of four experience a back injury within the first four years, and a lot of it is related directly to lifting patients. And these are very commonplace. This is our first one that we've received, and it's been a very well-received piece of equipment within the department. We're patiently awaiting our all-electric police patrol vehicle that we really should be taking delivery of, I'm going to say, anytime. Hopefully, within the next 30 to 45 days. Got pushed back a little bit due to the manufacturer, GM Chevy, having to suspend production back in December and January due to software issues. But production is rolling again. We're in constant contact with our dealership, as long with our upfitter, who's going to take it from a base car and transition into a police patrol vehicle. So hopefully, by the fall, this will be on the road. So we're looking, we're very excited to get this in. Medic 26 replacement. Earlier this year, we're going to replace a 2005 Medic, which is currently our reserve Medic. It's going to be replaced with a 2024 Demir's ambulance that was ordered in January. The estimated delivery date is fall of 2024. We're hoping September, October. This unit will be very similar to our other Medic, which is a 2017 Demir's ambulance. So it's basically going to be a sister model to what we already have. Once this arrives with our current Medic situation, we should be good for the next decade with regards to capital needs with our Medics because that puts us out to about 15 to 17 years for our reserve Medic. So we'll be in very, very good shape. Speed signs. Members of the community that may be out there watching, you know, we have two of these speed signs that they collect a tremendous amount of data. We use them very frequently throughout the city. Sometimes we'll use them for citizens' generated complaints, but other times, we just proactively place them out to monitor traffic areas. They are a very, very valuable resource for us because it allows us to identify true areas of need and where to best allocate our resources with regards to speed enforcement. So this is really for anybody at home watching or watching at a later date. If you have a speeding concern that you notice within the city, please don't hesitate to reach out to us. We'll typically place these signs out. We'll monitor data for seven days. We'll get kind of an idea of what we're looking at, and then we'll follow up if we do have a complainant who said, you know, hey, we need a sign in this area due to excessive speed. Personnel changes. We lost a key member of the department in April of this year, Captain Przynski. He was our administrative captain at the time he retired. Captain Przynski started for the city of Oakwood in March of 2010. He retired on April 21st with 28 years of public safety service. 14 of us was with us, and the other 14 was with the city of Dayton Fire Department prior to joining Oakwood. We wish Kevin the best and his family the best as he embarks on the next chapter of his life. PSAP compliance, our dispatch compliance standards. These were mandated in May of 2016. They're ongoing, continuous standards that have to be met for all dispatch centers, public safety answering points. PSAPs is what they're referred to within the state of Ohio. It doesn't matter if you have a single position PSAP like we do here, or you're the Montgomery County Regional Dispatch Center. We all have to meet the same standards. In May of 2019 was the first audit that was done, and Oakwood was found to be in full compliance. And I'm happy to report that we continue to be in compliance. I've said this a couple of times. When these standards were implemented, many thought they were designed to eliminate dispatch centers like ours and go more regionalized and larger centers as well. But it's a testament to the people that keep these standards up within our department that we're able to maintain all the standards that are required by the state with a single dispatch position. I think it's a very, very valuable resource, not only to the safety department, but for our community to maintain our own dispatch center and continue to have it here located within the city limits. Use of force incidents. So far, year-to-date, we've had one, which is an incredible number. You know, and if you look historically, you can count on one hand in only a couple of years, you know, now eight, nine years ago, where we had more than five use-of-force incidents in a year. This is a true testament to the professionalism of the men and women in the safety department because we estimate we have about 25,000 to 30,000 citizen interactions a year on all types of range of calls for service interactions, and not all of them are pleasant. And when you look at our, and when you look at our use-of-force numbers, and if you would try to convert that to a percentage of 25,000 citizen encounters for a department in three uses of force, there's a period, and there's a whole lot of zeros before you come to a number. So it's a very, very, very low percentage that our officers use force with regards to our contacts. And I think, like I said, I think it's the professionalism, the training, the background, and the experience. And all of that, I think, makes up, or is reflected in our numbers year after year. Good Choice program. Just a reminder for everybody at home. If your young child comes home and says they got to receive the citation or a ticket from the safety department, it's actually a positive thing. We implemented this program, I believe, three years ago, and it's designed to recognize the Oakwoods' youth for making good choices, such as using a crosswalk when crossing a street, wearing a bicycle helmet, playing or exercising outdoors, saying hi to a public safety officer if they drive by, wearing a seatbelt in a car. So we hand these out typically between Memorial Day and Labor Day every summer. You know, and it's been very, very well-received, both by the kids, who have the ability to get a treat, you know, as a result of receiving a citation. The program is really just designed to create positive interaction between the safety department and the youth within the community. Citizens Police Academy. Normally, I say, when I stand up here and remind people about the Citizens Police Academy, I say it's full. We currently have two open slots remaining for the 2024 CPA. So I would encourage anybody at home, if you have interest, to reach out to the safety department. The information is on our website, the city website, as well. The academy runs 10 weeks. It will start Wednesday, the Wednesday after Labor Day, and it's 10 consecutive Wednesday nights. Talk a lot about our department, our patrol operations, traffic enforcement, use of force, evidence collection, fire prevention, and education. There's a night at the range. We also bring in specialty units that we have access to through mutual aid agreements, canines, that kind of thing as well. It's free of charge, and it's open to anybody who's an Oakwood resident or who works and is employed within the city of Oakwood. Animal complaints. Just talking a little bit about our animal complaints that we receive. You know, between January 1 of 2023 and July 15, the city of Oakwood's received 372 animal complaints. That's comprised of everything, not only domestic complaints, but also wild animal complaints as well. That could be anything from a dog bite to a loose... That could be anything from a dog bite to a, to a loose dog, to a barking dog. The vast majority of the complaints that we receive on domestic house pet animals is related to dogs, but we do receive some cats complaints as well. And then on the wild animal side where you're, where you're dealing with foxes and raccoons and coyotes, we receive complaints about them as well. But it's something that we frequently deal with, as you can see, almost on a daily basis. And one of the, one of the biggest, I guess, challenges that we often encounter is loose dogs. Many of them are sometime, are, just get out of the backyard, and as you guys know, and most people know, we have a kennel out back, we go, we capture the dog, we bring them back here, and a matter, within an hour or two, they're reunited with their owner. But unfortunately, there's times that animals are deliberately dumped in the city of Oakwood, particularly dogs. Unwanted dogs are dumped in our city. We, we will go, we will take custody of the animals, we will bring them back here, but we can only keep them for so many days, and sometimes we try to foster them, and we use all the resources that are available to us, including the Montgomery County Animal Resource Center that is, has been a great partner to us. Very rare, but on time, but time to time, we will encounter an aggressive dog as well. It could be injured, it could be sick, and it's beyond our capabilities, so we would reach out to a care and control officer to help us take custody of that dog to prevent injury to not only ourselves, to others as well. So it is, it is something that we see and deal with often. On, on the wild side, it's typically the raccoons, the coyotes, the foxes, particular maybe some of the larger properties on the west side that they're roaming or nesting in, in their properties on their yards. There is a provision within the codified ordinance that does allow homeowners to trap wild animals, but they have to go through a process with the Public Safety Department, and it has to be approved by the Public Safety Director. If you have a problem with raccoons nesting, or fox, or coyotes are really the three that we've come across in the years, there is a process for that. You're just not able to do that on your own. You have to basically show why you feel the need to trap and remove the animals, and then it has to be approved. So with that being said, I'm actually going to turn this part of the presentation over. We have Director Amy Bohart, who actually runs, she's the Director of the Montgomery County Animal Resource Center, and then we have a team lead care and control officer, Candy Brodus. They're going to come up and they're going to talk a little bit about what the Animal Resource Center does within our county and our community. So with that, I will turn it over to them.
Thank you, Chief. We do want to take a moment to thank Chief Hill for taking the time to invite us, as well as every council member here. It's a pleasure to get to tell you a little bit about who we are and what we do. So as the dog warden for Montgomery County, we patrol 462 square miles within the county. Our aim is to provide safety to all of the residents that live in our county, to promote humane animal welfare, and to connect pets home. We estimate 140,000 dogs live in Montgomery County. We have space at the Animal Resource Center to house 80. So much of what we do-
Could you say that again, 80?
Absolutely, yes, 80.
Thank you.
Yes. And much of what we do is aimed at problem solving, to figure out where a dog came from, so that we can work to get it home, and ensure that those folks have the supplies or resources or knowledge that they need to be successful. We believe pets, specifically dogs, enrich people's lives, and we aim to preserve that. We want to keep pets and people together. So as I mentioned earlier, we spend a considerable amount of our day answering the question, where did this dog come from, with every dog we encounter. We find, you know, often dog licenses or microchips are a reliable source to answer that question. However, the licensing rate within Montgomery County, we estimate at about 34% in the county. So I mention that because we like to build awareness around that and make sure folks know that that is the law, and not only that, but it is your dog's legal proof of ownership, and it helps us get the dog back to you that much more quickly. Dog licenses can be traced 24/7/365 on the county auditor's website, and so it means that any person, it doesn't have to be an Animal Resource Center staff member, that encounters that dog with a license on, can go online and quickly find out where to get it home to. What I will say is, as you can imagine with the sheer numbers I've shared, we cannot be effective alone. It most certainly takes all of us, and you know, there are many ways that folks can get involved to help, to further our efforts. We have, not only through helping to reunite pets home, which we absolutely know is happening out there in our community, and I want to say thank you within the city of Oakwood that that is happening so well, but in addition to that, adoption is a great option for folks, fostering, if maybe you can't add a permanent pet to your home, volunteering with the Animal Resource Center or other local rescues is incredibly helpful, as well as donations. We do accept donations, both monetarily and gently-used items as well. And those are used not only at the shelter, but oftentimes we look to repurpose them out in other homes to help make those pet owners successful. What I did want to share with you is maybe a little bit about how the data in Oakwood compares to the entire county. You know, last year we impounded 1,500 dogs from Montgomery County, 90 of those dogs were from Oakwood. So it's quite small in comparison, and you know, we received last year 9,160 calls for service. 21 of them were from Oakwood. So not a large number, and I want to say, once again, we want to say a huge thank you to Chief Hill and, and what you all are doing, because just in comparison to the number of complaints that you have record of, compared to the number of complaints that I have record of, clearly your Public Safety Department is doing some pretty remarkable things. So with that, I know Chief Hill mentioned, you know, talking a little bit about what we don't do. We are focused primarily on dogs, and so cats, for example, we will put you in connection with other resources, but we don't generally house and care for and provide services to cats. That, as well as wildlife, same type of thing. We will connect you with Department of Wildlife or whatever the appropriate resource may be to, to handle that concern. So with that, you know, I will say that our, our business looks very different now than it did five-plus years ago. Animal Control was historically known to round up loose dogs off the streets and keep them away from people, in essence, by locking them away elsewhere and relying on that person to come forward to claim their pet. We actually work quite the opposite now. We are looking to keep pets and people together, and like I said, we aim to answer the question, where did this dog come from, and we get it back there safely. All right, with that, we will turn it over to you all. If there are any questions that we can answer for you?
Any questions for Amy?
No, you won't take the rabbits, squirrels, and chipmunks that are destroying my yard? You won't take them, huh?
Very sorry. No, we will not.
It's worth a shot. I'm still trying to find someone that'll do that, but-
I respect you asking.
No, that's all right. I do have one question, and I don't know if it's for you or for our city attorney, Rob. My mom mistaken, don't we have about 1,800 to 1,900 licensed dogs in Oakwood? I feel that that was always our number. Do you know, Alan?
And I, I can get numbers if you'd be interested. I did bring with me at least the compliance rate. You know, we estimate about 2,200 dogs live in the city of Oakwood.
Okay, there's the number I was getting at, because I, I've always been shocked that we have that many that, that were licensed. This number was told to me a few years ago, so I don't know if that's even close to being accurate right now, but I guess my point is, I was shocked that we had something like 1,800 licensed in Oakwood. So to me, how many does that, we only have 9,200 people, so how many more dogs are there in Oakwood that aren't getting licensed? That was kind of my question. It's kind of amazes me we have this many dogs in Oakwood. How many? 9,600 people, sorry. Sorry, there's 400 people I don't know very well, sorry. So yeah, that's all I'm getting at, is that you, you think there's around 2,022, is that what she said?
2,200 that live here, and that's just-
Oh, 2,200?
That's based on a formula that we use, based on households and number of dogs per household and things like that.
Oh, okay, okay.
But in terms of the numbers that are licensed, we're looking at about 23% that are licensed of those 2,200.
23% just in Oakwood, or?
Correct, in the city of Oakwood.
That's accurate data, or is that's an educated guess?
So the number of dog licenses sold is a firm piece of data-
Yeah.
But the estimation of how many dogs live in Oakwood is the estimation piece.
Okay, okay.
So.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Other questions for Amy?
I have a question. If a dog isn't licensed and you make the recovery, is there any penalty for a person who hasn't licensed the dog?
Yeah, that's a great question. Yes, if it's outside of license sale season, which is December through January every year, there is a penalty associated with the dog license, and it's double, basically, the cost of a license.
Other questions? I have one for Amy. Can you describe your funding sources? Are the license fees your only source of funding, or?
Yes, primarily license fees, which does not account for nearly our budget. Most of our budget is supplemented with the general revenue.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I seem to recall there was financial issues with the ARC, I don't know, five, seven years ago? I don't, you just rely on the deficit's going to get covered by the general fund of the county?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
And, go ahead.
Chief Hill, we, we have a chip reader, right, in the department? Do you want to comment on that for a minute? I think, if I remember, a citizen donated money for an upgraded one, I believe.
Yes, we had one, and then we had a citizen donate enough money for us to buy a purchase, or to purchase a second one, and she talks about the recovery and the reuniting with the dog owners. For, if we go out, we have a, we respond to a loose dog complaint. We will capture the dog, take custody of the dog, we'll bring it back here. The first thing we do is chip it. Most of the time, that reunification occurs based off that chip, or we'll reach out to the owner once we get the information, or to, a lot of Oakwood residents know if their dog gets out of the backyard, to contact us because there's a good chance that we have it. That reunification takes place, and then, like I said, then when we get into the extreme cases, and as Amy mentioned 21 times, when we're reaching out to them, it's because we have a dog, we can't place it, we can't foster it, and, and, but we also can't keep it in a kennel out back for an extended period of time, and I believe we keep them, I think, three days. Once we get outside of three days, if it's not a reunification period, you know, we look, first and foremost, we recognize that their resources are overextended, you know, 140,000 dogs, you know, particularly estimated 2,200 in the city of Oakwood, and she has capacity for 80 at our facility. So we try to do everything we can, but there's times where you cannot place a dog that we know that was deliberately left within our city, and we have to rely on the Resource Center, you know, in those instances.
I'm, I'm assuming that if someone is abandoning a dog in Oakwood, the likelihood of that dog being chipped is pretty remote?
Pretty remote, yeah. A lot of them, they're ver, fairly young, you know, they're fairly young, whether they're pups or six or eight months old, you know, they're very, very young dogs, you know, that we come across, and, you know, we feel, you know, they're deliberately placed here because if somebody's going to call, we're going to take possession of the dog and hopefully find it and, you know, and it's like, or, it's not a permanent home, but it doesn't always happen.
And one follow-up question, if you have to, if you want to have your dog chipped, is that something a veterinarian does, and if so, how much does it cost?
I, you may be able to speak on that.
Yes, thank you for asking that question. So veterinarian offices do offer microchipping, as do we, and I will say that we offer it at a much cheaper cost. Right now, you can chip your pet with Animal Resource Center for $10. No appointment required.
Oh.
Walk-ins, welcome. So we highly encourage that, because obviously that is a form of ID that can't be taken off and can't walk away or get, get lost.
All right, well, thank you very much. Any other follow-up?
That was my question.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I have one more for Alan. Alan, I'm, that, that 372 surprised me on animal complaints, and if you really think about it, I see that the foxes and the, you know, raccoons and all that, the coyotes, I understand those. You said majority is dogs, and I, that was what I would think. Just give me a ballpark guess, because that number really intrigues me. You think 300 are dogs, 200 are dogs?
I would, if I had a-
It's a guess, I'm not holding you to it. Yeah, yeah.
Going back memory bank of listening calls come across the radio, I would say 250 to 300 are primarily surrounding dogs.
Just dogs, okay.
And it's everything, like you said, from barking dogs to dogs at large.
Yeah, that was my next question. Is it more barking, or is it more dogs loose? Or is it?
I'm going to say depends on the time of year.
Okay.
You know, spring and fall seem, I, you know, are kind of more of a peak time for barking dogs. Why? Because it's nice outside and everybody has their windows open when the air conditioning's on and the windows are closed.
Makes sense, yeah.
Sometimes you don't, we don't receive the barking dogs, but you know, we do respond to a lot of dogs at large.
Okay.
Calls as well.
I'm just curious as to how many people are calling about barking dogs. I mean, it's, it's just, I get that. Loose dogs, I understand, but-
What are the rules on barking dogs? I mean, what, what is the actual call? I guess I'm not-
We have a provision under the 505 section of within the charter that, that's, basically it's excessive. You know, dogs do bark, everybody knows that, but the complaint that we often respond to, it's Saturday morning at 8 o'clock, and our neighbor's dog has been outside barking continuously for 45 minutes or 15 minutes. And it's, and those are the types of call we receive, or they've been barking all night, or we know the neighbors are out of town and they left their dog outside, and the dog's been barking continuously as people walk by, and those are the kind of barking dog calls that we, you know, and that's usually what, what it revolves around, is somebody's dog is outside barking for an extended period of time-
Yeah, that makes sense.
-and the pet owner doesn't bring the dog inside, they just put it outside, probably because they don't hear it-
Right.
... inside the house, or they're immune to it. It's like being in a restaurant with the baby crying. Everybody's bothered by it, but the parents, they're useful, you know?
I have one more question too, for Chief. When, when you take possession of a dog, and the dog is not licensed, do we encourage the citizens to get that license right then and there? Do we have the forms?
We do not have the forms. They would have, they have the forms, the County Resource Center. We refer them, and we let them know that their dog isn't licensed, and there's a period of penalty for that. So we encourage them to, to go and get it licensed as well, but we don't license the dog ourselves.
Thank you.
This has generated more questions than we've ever had.
I'm going back to the porta potties.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Well, I do like dogs better than porta potties, I'll tell you that right now.
Is, is the, the ARC, is it off Webster, up north, up near Wagner Ford and Needmore?
75 to Benchwood, turn right, and you'll dead straight into, is it Dog Park? Yeah, and Animal Resource Center.
Okay, all right. Well, Amy and Candy, thank you very much for coming, it's been very informative.
Yes, thank you very much.
All right, and you still have some more to report, or not? That's it? Okay, all right. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Any more questions for the three of them? All right, thank you all for coming, we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So now, let's see, can our city manager ask, do a better deal than porta potties and dogs?
I don't know, it's going to be rough, but I'll give it a shot here. Couple of comments on the chief's briefing. First on the animals. We've, I can recall two employees here, both retired now, that have adopted animals that we have found and have had back here in the kennel, and one had an affinity to cats, and I think she adopted three of them, if I recall, and made a home for them, and so that was beautiful. And then we had an employee who loved dogs, and as I recall, she adopted at least two of them, Teresa Rushlow in the water department. They are both retired now, so hopefully we'll get some new employees that like to do that, but we do notice when there's a dog, you know, a dog in the kennel in the back here, and pay close attention to it, make sure it's cared for, so. Thank you, Chief, for a great briefing. You know, as, as I was listening to Chief, I was thinking about something that is so impactful, and, and you're living here in Oakwood, and you're driving around town during the regular workday, in the evenings, over the weekends, I was just thinking that one of the, the things that I, I, I know- one of the, the things that I, I notice because of my position here, but maybe I don't appreciate as much as I should, is the, the visibility of our officers. I see them all the time. I see them on a Saturday morning, when I'm walking down Irving Avenue with the dog. I'll see them on a Saturday evening, when I, you know, run to Dorothy Lane Market for something, and, and it just seems like, on a regular basis, no matter where I'm at, I see an officer patrolling our streets. I see them going down, I live on Volusia, where I have an alley behind my, my home there, and I see them, you know, going through the alleys, and, and I think that just goes a very long way in, you know, keeping our, our community safe. So, thank you for that. A few quick items, start with construction. A big, big thank you to, I won't mention the Far Hills Storm Sewer Project again, but a big thank you to all who were impacted by that enormous project. It, it took, as we look back now, about 12 months to completely finish. A little bit slow getting started, but a major improvement to our storm sewer system. There are just a couple final restoration items left to do, but basically, the project is completed. And a number of different folks on our staff here had a hand in it. Of course, our law director getting the easements we needed, and, and others. But the one person that really lived and breathed the project on a weekly basis for the last year is Chris Kuzma, our city engineer. And I want to publicly thank him for all his efforts in shepherding that project along. The sidewalk curb and apron, driveway apron program is now in full swing in the Far Hills Avenue Business District. It started on the west side, right off Peach Orchard, and we're just going to work our way through. It's, there's no way to do that work without disrupting parking and the travel and the, in the cruise lanes there, but the end result will be wonderful, and we'll, you know, well-placed and properly placed concrete can last 40, 50 years. And so, these are major, long-term improvements to the business district. And then, as most people know, the Far Hills Resurfacing Project began last week. Barrett Paving has done an excellent job. They worked four days last week, Tuesday to Friday, and completed the entire two-mile length from the north side on the west to the south in the curb lane. And today, they started on the south side in the curb lane, working northbound. And if they can get all the way through this week to the far north end, I think, you know, we're at probably three to four weeks total for the project. A lot depends on the weather, but it's going to result in a wonderful new roadway. I wanted to recognize two people that worked for MVCC. One is still there, but he's, he'll be leaving shortly. And I want to do this because these are people that are behind the scenes. Miami Valley Communications Council, they do work for, primarily for the eight-member communities, and all the, everything that is involved in the recording and broadcasting, and then replaying of the council meetings and, and other sorts of programs that committees put on, it's done by the staff at MVCC. And, you know, I often refer to Carol Collins and the, and the Leadership Services Department as a small but mighty staff. I would say the same of MVCC. It's a small number of people, but they do excellent work. And I'm prompted to, to recognize these two people, because Joe McKenzie recently announced that he's leaving. And I know you all would know Joe if you saw him, but you wouldn't probably know him by name or know much about him, because, again, he's behind the scenes. He's been here many, many times over the years, and he is leaving in August to take a newly created position, teaching broadcast communications at Springboro High School. And he has worked at MVCC, or he's been with MVCC for 30 years, which you wouldn't believe if you looked at him, because he's not old enough. But Lori did some detective work and figured out that he began volunteering at MVCC when he was 13 years old. So, obviously, very passionate about this, this line of work. And in 1999, he was hired as a part-time, what they called government production technician, and then in 2007, became a full-time government producer. And he, he's received numerous Philo T. Farnsworth Awards for Excellence in Community Programming in Ohio, Indiana, Kentucky, and Michigan. So, it's, he's going to be a big loss, and in addition to him being very, very proficient technically, just a very, very nice man, great to work with, and Lori's shaking her head, she can attest to it better than everyone. And while, I was, we were, Lori and I were talking about Joe, we thought about Nick Everett. Now, Nick left MVCC in November of 2022, so he's been gone for a while already, and didn't have nearly the longevity. He started there in June of 2017 as the chief engineer for MVCC, and he did excellent work, and like, Joe was just a wonderful man, wonderful to work with. And in particular, as you think back to the CAREZAC money we received, and the decision we made to invest, if my memory serves me correctly, about $80,000 worth of it, to create the Zoom platform environment, or what we, that we have here, and the ability to, to conduct Zoom meetings and trainings at the OCC. Why, Nick was very, very instrumental in the building of this whole thing, and all the technological components of it, and all the stuff that makes it work. So, again, worked very much hand-in-hand with Lori. And so, I wanted to recognize those two gentlemen for all their great work here. And my final item tonight is I want to recognize three people that received, I had the honor of presenting awards to at the Oakwood Rotary Club meeting last Friday morning. And we awarded the Civic Leadership Award to Andy Ide, and the Community Service Awards to Cindy Stafford, our finance director, and Tracy Martin, our Assistant Finance Director. So, these awards, the, the Community Service Award was established in 1996, and we have now presented 18 awards. So, if you do the math, we don't do it every year. We wait until we have an employee that we really feel is exceptional and worthy of this award. And in 2002, just before Mike Kelly retired as our city manager, we added the Civic Leadership Award, and to date, we've awarded 13 of those. So, again, we're not doing it as a Rotary Club every year, but when we have what feels are really worthy person to recognize. So, Andy has been living in Oakwood for about 25 years. Nearly 20 of those years, he has served on the Oakwood Planning Commission. And as you know, that's a voluntary role, there's no compensation. And while all of the volunteer, assistant volunteers, you know, that help us on various committees and boards and commissions here at the city, over 100 of them, I would, I think a good argument could be made that the toughest position is sitting on the Planning Commission, because the commission often deals with land use issues where neighbors don't agree, and, or, or rather, the community as a whole does not agree. And ultimately, the commission needs to render a, a decision on, on each application. So, big kudos to Andy for nearly 25, 20 years of service on the, on the commission. Not only just as a member, but in 2008, he was appointed, or elected by the, by this fellow commission members as the vice chair, and in 2018, as the chair. So, for the last six years, he sits in what I'll call the hot seat here, and runs the meetings, and has just done an exceptional job. You, you can all think back at the various issues, land use issues, that we've had to deal with, and, and again, big kudos to Andy. Cindy joined staff in 2008, and she was selected, I remember it vaguely now, but she was selected from 41 applicants, and came here with no public sector experience, but a broad private sector base of experience. And that has served her extremely well. She's done an outstanding job in leading the, again, small but mighty Oakwood Finance Department, year after year after year, receiving the Auditor of State Award for Excellence in Financial Reporting. And I couldn't say enough positive and good about Cindy Stafford. And then Tracy Martin, I'm glad Carol's here tonight, because Tracy is the second-longest serving employee, way behind Carol, but that's, she's an anomaly, a one-off. But Tracy walked in the door here in 1987, and so she's been here 37 years, and was initially hired as a public safety dispatcher, did that for 18 years. In a combined department like this, it's a, it's a tougher job than just a police department or just a fire department, because you've got to be, you have to understand the, the whole business. And if you think about the emergency calls that come in here, you know, you've got to be cool under pressure, you got to be calm, you got to be, you got to listen carefully, you got to try to size up what's going on in a, in a very, you know, potentially stressful situation. And then you have to be, you know, comforting sort, you know, to keep the person on the other line giving you the information needed. And then, becomes the dispatching part, where you, you, you need to keep up with what's going on out there in the field. And the dispatcher really is, is keeping track of who's where and what's going on, and just plays an enormously critical role. So, Tracy excelled at that, and, and so, then in 2005, made a shift to the Finance Department, and worked until 2019 as an account clerk, too. And then in 2019, the last five years, has been the Assistant Finance Director. So, between Cindy and Tracy, those two are the backbone of the Oakwood Finance Department. And so, anyway, it was a great event last Friday, and, and three very deserving folks. That's all I have.
Any questions for our city manager? I'd just like to point out that Cindy, on her way out of the parking lot today, said that they received another Auditor of State Award for Financial Excellence. And I'd also like to point out that Rob Stevens is our liaison to Miami Valley Communications Council, and just recently finished his term as chair. I believe that's correct?
Uh, yeah, at the end of last year, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so appreciate that effort as well.
Sure.
It is now time for council comments, and Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to talk about the city's newest advancement in recycling. It's called the Hefty Renew Program, and it allows residents to purchase specific orange bags from our local retailers. I want to make sure you see the box and the bag, because the bag is critical. It allows residents to place the hard-to-recycle items. I think that, what do we call them? The previously unacceptable items into the regular trash collection here. And what are those unacceptable items that are now acceptable? They're things like candy wrappers, foam, egg cartons, plastic pet food bags, salad bags, bubble wrap, just about everything. So, it's really going to be, it really gives people an opportunity to, to know that what they're putting in these orange bags, and I stress, orange bags, that they put it with the regular trash, and then Rumkey will pull it out, and it allows them to, take them to a specific recycle specialist. All this information's on our website, but I've found that in talking to citizens, that a lot of people just haven't gone to our website to purchase these, to, to find out what it is. But I do want to commend our Public Works Department for keeping us up to date on the newest innovation of what we can do.
Thank you. And one of the interesting things about this program is they can take these, these orange bags, and the recycling people that before, even though you thought you recycled it, it could still go to the landfill. But under this program, it can go to a specialty person that can recycle it. And one of the things that they make are things like park benches that are 100% done from recycled material. And they also have some other things, like landscape stones, that look like stones, but it's really all recycled materials. So, it's really a pretty interesting operation. And if you ever get a chance to take a tour of the recycling center that Rumkey has down in northern Cincinnati, I think it's in, just north of, just south of 275, it's an incredible experience. And, and they told us that they're getting ready to make, do a state-of-the-art recycling center just north of Columbus, and I believe they're planning on spending like $100 million for this recycling center. So, it's, it's, they're, they're true believers. They believe that 100% can be recycled. I'm not there yet, but, but, and I don't have $100 million, but they've come, Rumkey's come a long way from picking up waste food from restaurants and using it to feed his hogs. That's how he's got started in the 30s. And then they passed a law that said you can't use, use food for hogs. And so, he went into a recycling business. So, how about that? Anything else?
No, I've just been surprised about how easy it is to fill the bag.
Yes.
In our little household.
Councilmember Turbin.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. On Friday, the city hosted a picnic for all the employees, and a few of us got the opportunity to go, and it was really a great event. I mean, the weather was great, and there was lots of food and games. But more so, it was a wonderful opportunity for the employees to just sit and chat in a, you know, a very casual environment. I know I enjoyed meeting and talking with a lot of the employees, but what impressed me most was the length of service that so many of our employees have. And it seems to be the theme tonight. You know, we all, we know that Norbert's been here 32 years, and Carol, almost 50. But what it really hit home to me is when I was talking to Doug Spitler, and he's, of course, our Public Works Director, and he was introducing me to all of his team, and he said, you know, well, Tom's been here 10 years, and Dave's been here nine years, and Chris is seven, and Missy 15, and I'm like, wow, that's really pretty amazing. And so, what it does reflect is the quality of the work environment, and that directly affects the quality of the services that are provided. You know, we live in a wonderful community, and every day, every day, we all benefit from the quality of these services. So, hats off to all the employees of Oakwood. Thank you.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yeah, just one comment. This is for all of our social media users out there who reside in Oakwood. It's just a plea to remind you that if you have a question, or an issue, or a complaint, anything, call the city, call the city staff, or one of your council members. Instead of, I, I see it constantly, and I'll just, I'll take the heat for this, this is, this is on me, not my fellow council members. Some of the posts that are out there, it's just the false information and the misleading comments, when there's no facts behind them, it, it gets very frustrating at times. And all I'm trying to say is, if you have a question, our staff is phenomenal, very friendly, you call them, talk to them, they're just going to talk with you and listen to what you have, to what you have to say. And I guarantee the council members will do the same thing. You can always call me, I know that, and I guarantee my fellow council members will take your calls as well. Just reach out, ask the question, instead of putting false information out there, that is only going to lead to more problems. And I just, it's, you know, I've been, I've been watching it for years, I've been doing this a while now, and I just felt like I needed to say something. I'm just asking you to please call city staff, they'll help you with anything, you know, whether it's something major or something minor. We have a wonderful staff here that would be happy to listen to what you have to say. So, just, just asking for you to reach out and talk to us in person. Thank you.
Nice, Mayor Byington.
I got to add on to that, that's, I mean, absolutely true. We have the finest staff that you could possibly ask for. There's not a single person who won't sit down and listen to whatever concerns that you have, and try to find some sort of resolution to it. So, yeah, fine, fine job there. The only other comment I have is, I'd just like to thank all the beautification award winners. I think I've said this numerous times, but, you know, as an architect, one of the reasons that I moved to Oakwood, you know, most people, it's the schools, it's the this, it's that that, you know, for me, it was, it was the architecture of the community. You know, when you have a community as unique as we are, with just the diversity of styles and, and materials and those type of things, it's just fantastic to see people taking a pride in that, and trying to, you know, top their neighbor with this, or that, or, or those type of things. It just really shows how much we care about our community, the visual aspects of it. the visual aspects of it. And I just, you know, am very thankful for everybody who spent the extra time to do things with their yards. You know, for all the people who win today, there are people who are living right next to them who are just as, as great, that just for some reason didn't get the nod this time, but probably in the future. So keep up the good work.
Thank you. I had the opportunity last week to go out to Wright Patterson Air Force Base for the Change of Command Ceremony for the Air Force Research Laboratory. And four-star General Duke Richardson, you know, hosted that situation. There were community leaders and, you know, mayors and state reps and state senators, you know, that went to this ceremony. And the Air Force Material Command, which General Richardson supervises, they employ eighty-nine thousand people and have a budget of seventy-two million dollars. And the lab, the lab then, you know, falls.
Billion, not billion.
I'm sorry, what did I say? I said million? No. Oh, gosh, there we go. It's billion. It's billion. It's a B.
It is billion.
It's a B. And then the Air Force Research Lab, they have over six thousand government civilians and students, and eighty percent of their staff are scientists and engineers with advanced degrees. And thirty-six percent of those people have doctorate degrees. And they also have a thousand active-duty military members and nearly six thousand contractors for a total workforce of like twelve thousand five hundred. Major General Scott Kane is leaving here at the end of, end of June, or July here, and he's going out to Edwards Air Force Base. And he's going to, you know, he's not only, you know, a brainiac, but he also is a fighter pilot as well. And they're testing weapon systems. And he's gonna be responsible overseeing four or five air force bases in the western part of the United States. The person that's replacing him is Brigadier General Jason Bartolomee. And his last, he's coming here from Hill Air Force Base in Utah where his previous position, he was responsible for the development, deployment, and sustainment of the next generation ICBMs. So what they're saying is we are, you know, the entire government is trying to make the Air Force to figure out to be the next generation of warfighters and to be, continue to have, you know, premier space to take care of whatever threats that are going to be coming, you know, our way. And it was a really good ceremony. Interesting thing, they said, the way they do these command of ceremonies, they make sure that the top leaders, you know, will hold the flag of the division, and they do it in front of the troops they command. And this is, this is a ceremony that goes back to Frederick the Great back in Prussia. So back to like sixteen hundreds, I think. So it was a very, it was a good ceremony. Normally, we'll get invited to those types of things. And we wanted everybody, as you saw in the paper, we have a lot of military families now that are coming to Oakwood so their children can go to our schools while they're in these deployments because hardly any of them last more than two years in any one place. And then they have to go to wherever they have to go. So I enjoyed it very much and look forward to going to more because I guess they're doing a lot of change of commands coming up here this summer. Our, that concludes our meeting. Our next regular session is gonna be on Monday, August fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, and we are adjourned.